A few teeth.
Good evening, everyone. Glad you all could make it tonight. It's good to see the gallery with some folks in it for a change. Instead of two or three, so it's nice to have you all here. We're going to begin tonight with our invocation by Councilwoman Diane Jean. May we all stand, please, and give a quick allegiance.
Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to get together this evening for the business of the city. We want to be mindful of all these children and parents that have traveled to come to our city park for the state tournaments. We're getting safe travels. And we pray tonight that everyone will be safe traveling with all the rain that we've been having. In Jesus' name, amen.
I now call the order. This city council meeting, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, City of Oak Hill, West Virginia. Our clerk will now do our roll call.
Mayor Charles Briscoe.
Present.
Councilor-at-large William Hannabass.
Here.
Ward one Diana Janey.
Here.
Ward one Roger Evans. Ward one Terry Van Buskirk.
Here.
Ward two Tim Buskis.
Here.
Ward two PJ Elder.
Here.
Ward two Chris Gill.
Here.
Thank you. You all have had the minutes in your packet along with the treasurer's report. We will begin to put a motion to accept all the reports.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the reading for a little minutes as per.
You want to add the treasurer's report in as well? Do we have one? We can do the minimum, that's fine. Can we get a second on the?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor? Thank you PJ. All opposed? The ayes have it. Let's do another motion for the treasurer's report.
I'll make a motion for the treasurer's report to be received.
One second, Beth.
We have a motion and a second to accept the treasurer's report. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Do we have any correspondence, Ms. Brown? That you? We don't have any correspondence. Thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments? Yes, we do. Michael McQuade is here concerning Grandparents' Day. Mr. McQuade, if you would come up to the podium, please.
Right there.
Thank you.
I'm proud to be here. Proud to be with everybody. What I'm here to speak on is that we now have that new marker. And it's a historic marker for my mother who started Grandparents' Day. And she wasn't born in Oak Hill, but she was born, you know, on Sunday Road fifty area. My father was born here. And he certainly helped her establish and found Grandparents' Day. And so what I'm here to talk about today is that we would like to use and be involved in the use of the amphitheater. And I know I got pronunciation wrong, but the theater to celebrate Grandparents' Day. And I think it's important that we in Oak Hill, take the lead and make, you know, make it to where Fayette County is really involved in Grandparents' Day and the state of West Virginia. You know, and anyone wants to see that marker, you go up to the Baptist church near the library. That marker's right there. And so it's a historic marker for Marion McQuade, Grandparents' Day, and how it came about in Oak Hill. So that's the main thing. And then as far as I'm going to hand out some sheets and some badges for Grandparents' Day. But at the theater, we were asking for between four and six hours to celebrate Grandparents' Day. And it's been kind of hot. So, you know, especially, you know, in the afternoons. So this would be on Sunday, the seventh of September. And then these sheets will have everything on it that I'm going to hand out. But that's about it. And what we would try to do is have hillbilly music, not really hillbilly, but bluegrass music. And sometimes we want to say Mountaineer instead of hillbilly, you know? We're proud of the Mountaineers and the whole thing with this grandpa day thing is if we all started out little. Now we're not so little. And sometimes we think it went slow and sometimes we think it went fast and, you know, doesn't really matter. Everyone is going to be an elder. And so we need to work on that. And make Oak Hill friendly for elders. So that's what this event is about. Education and letting people interact. And so as far as setting the times, it may be hot in the afternoon, but possibly starting at ten o'clock and going to two or going to four. And then I wanted to try to organize the type of vendor that would be like more homegrown or, you know, holistic or whatever and have vendors that were you know, like farmers market style or the type of vendors that have crafts and arts from this area. You know, relatively, doesn't have to be, you know, right in Oak Hill in foods. So, you know, the things like honey or those kind of handicrafts where they're, you know, something's needlepoint or these kind of crafts and or quilts. But I think the city needs to kind of pick up on what's going on and organize this event for years to come. And to welcome any vendors or, you know. But I don't think my mother really wanted to sell funnel cakes. You know, and there's nothing wrong with funnel cakes, but there's also an alternative to that. You know, a different message. And so that would be the type of vendors that could be there, but also community different leaders in different specialties that provide health services for not just the elders, but handicapped. And hand out literature and, you know, the whole thing. So anyway, that's about enough. I guess you get the idea. And I'll leave those sheets right there. And if you would, take a badge or button. It's been nice talking to you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple of new faces I'd like to introduce. First and foremost, I'd like to introduce Chris Meadows as our new city manager. If you'd stand, please. You find the place in?
We did, yes.
All right. I saw you had changed your address on that Facebook. I was a little concerned.
Yeah.
We also would like to welcome Hannah Morgan. She's our new zoning officer. Soon as she got in the door, I was hitting her up for a permit. Ain't that a shame? Welcome to both of you. And then we will have the presentation of the Spirit of Oak Hill Awards.
I'll start. First, I want to announce that we, on the, on the Spirit of Oak Hill Awards, we have partnered with Modern Woodsman. And they have, they sponsored the plaques that we're going to give out. And they're also will give a hundred dollars to a charity of the winner's choice. Sorry. So this first award is for the individual, the Spirit of Oak Hill for the individual. And I got the person here tonight on false pretenses. He thinks he's going to be talking about our new branding ideas. And he still might, but the individual award, the committee voted to present this to Robert Love. And Robert, as you know, grew up in Oak Hill. He went away for a while and he's back. And he came back into the community with a bang. He has been involved in everything that we have. And his wife also. I guess Robert's the pretty face of the group. And so we see him more, but he's involved with the high school football. He's in our hubcap. He's been doing, helping us with the branding with Destination by Design. He comes and saves us at the amphitheater when we can't find our projector for the movie night. So he's been a real asset to the community. And that's probably not all, everything that you do. I think I, there was something else I meant to mention that I heard that I didn't know you were involved in, but now I can't remember what it was. But probably if we're having a community event, you will see Robert Love there with his family. And we thank you so much for being a part of this community and everything that you have contributed to with your service. So thank you, Robert. Come in. Get your plaque.
Beautiful.
From Modern Woodsman. And if we can get somebody to take a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And so Sandy Smith is going to present our business.
And it'd be remiss if I didn't say also the Oak Leaf Festival, which everybody should come to.
Yes, you are. That's what it was because you helped at that bingo.
You've done a great job.
Yeah, good job doing that one.
Well, I'm not quite as good as the meeting and just add living. So I've got it written. The Spirit of Oak Hill stands as an award for recognition within the Oak Hill community, celebrating individuals and businesses whose character, actions, and dedication embody the very essence of what the award is about. This award's inception was inspired by a desire to honor individuals whose positive attitude and selfless actions often fly under the radar. Unlike recognitions based on athletics or academics, this is characteristic of root is rooted in the character of the business. It was established to formally recognize those who authentically embody these values. At its core, the spirit qualities such honors qualities such as integrity, kindness, perseverance, and community engagement. This business reflects these values on a day-to-day basis. They demonstrate, they show consistent demonstration of the Oak Hill values, positive impact on the Oak Hill community through informal acts of service and kindness. They are willing to go above and beyond. I am more than honored to award this to, or give this award to Barb and James, designs by Barb and James. I know you guys, if you run through town in August and September, you see many orange bugs. This is in thanks to them. They do this as a donation. They do over two hundred and fifty of them.
We love making everyone.
I do have to say that I tried to trick Barbara, but she got very mad. And she was not, and she was not coming to this meeting because she got so upset what I told her. So I had to say, I'm not going to tell you what it's for, but it's for something good. So will you please come? There. Thank you.
Congratulations to our recipients. Bobby Roberts, I call you Bobby. I've mentioned Bobby. I'm going to continue to call you Bobby. We were in the TV trenches together, so I guess Bobby's okay.
Definitely. You get the pass.
I'm just wanting to let you know that I'm very, I've watched your progress over the last years, several years, and very proud of you. Keep going, keep continuing what you're doing. And I guarantee you, I'm sure he's proud of you. Okay, let's move into our group. Oh, there's one. We already did it. Let's move on to unfinished business. The updates on our evaluation plan for employees.
I'll put in your packet some forms that I thought might be helpful for the evaluation process if if you want to use those. There's a, one of the forms is where you sit with the employee. In this case, it would be the, the city manager, chief police, the clerk treasurer, and the judge. And you talk, and you kind of talk about what you expect from them. And you do that at the beginning of the whatever time. And then there's another one that you can, like if you want to have a mid, a midterm kind of, you know, we think you're doing good or you're not, or whatever. This kind of midway through, or you could just use this for the evaluation instead of having it as a progress evaluation. And then the file form is like an in-depth discussion with the employee and going over their appraisal, their, for their evaluation. And then you would give them a grade based on
So, so is this based on, like, say exceeds expectations? Is that like a number five? They get, they get like five points?
Right.
Then you take the average of that and that is what it gets?
However, you want to do that. That was just something, those were just forms I thought that you might be interested in using whenever you start doing it. And I don't know how you want to do it. If you want to start like now and then finish up at the next June or do you do it once or twice a year? It's up to you all really, I guess, however you want, how you want to do that.
At the bank, we have a mid-review in June and then one December, right?
And so this would be you'd have a mid-year in December. And that's what the progress one was for. And then you have another one in January, July. That depends on what time you want to do it. And if you want it instituted, well, I guess the city manager will decide if he wants to do that for all the rest of employees.
Well, that's what I've always seen as like hers, you know, you did, you do a mid-year and then a end of the year. You know, to see if there was things that needed to be worked on, if they were changed or we were out with them. Doesn't mean that something's going to change automatic. It takes, sometimes it takes time. But you'll know where they're at with that progression.
Right. And so that's the way these forms are set up, that you meet with them at first, let them know what you expect. And then see how they're meeting the.
That's this fourth form that you're talking about.
That's, that's the one you would do at the, at the end. After you've already had.
Okay, that's the appraisal. So number three is the one you're talking about that would be your beginning, right?
Right.
So now with us just hiring Gretchen, do we do something like, we're going to have something at the end of July. Do we start there or how do we start?
Yeah, you all did have a condition on her salary that in six months you would talk to her.
Yeah, she had to have a six-month appraisal.
Right. So it has been six months.
So hers has to be by the end of this month, right?
Yeah, well, it's you started it in December. Yeah. So for one in seven months.
Can we do that on the night at the special council? Are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, that, because that budget revision normally does take very long if you want to do it.
That way we're already here. We don't have to have extra maybe, right, extra night.
That sounds okay.
I agree with that. I don't have no problem.
Any questions? May we have a motion to accept that report, plan, date?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the employee evaluation plan. All those in favor? All those? Motion's carried. Ayes have it. Yes, sir.
Is that just for Gretchen that night or you?
That night will just be for Gretchen. The others, I figure, will schedule throughout.
Number two, unfinished business, our bank building update.
I do not have a report from the realtor, but we are having, there's a billing commission meeting tomorrow. It will be here and we will for the commission, well, not with that, the commission will review an offer that has been made and decide whether they want to counter that offer or if they're unacceptable as it is. So we do have something and it sounds, it sounds very promising.
So, so there'll be meetings tomorrow night, six o'clock here?
Yes.
So open to the public.
However, I mean, they will be going to the session or they probably will be going into executive session to discuss that all.
Right. I don't think we're going to need to vote on that. Number three would be our considered planning commission's recommendation on heavy equipment.
In your packet is the definitions that are proposed to by the planning commission for heavy equipment. And I think that was out of order.
No, it's on your table.
I know, but I think I put it. I think I put it on this thing out of order where the documents are. Maybe now I'll give you this. So these are the definitions that we need added in the zoning code. And the first one is equipment, heavy equipment in R one, R two, or R three zone would be any commercial vehicle or machinery with a gross vehicle weight of over fourteen thousand one pounds or over twenty-eight feet in length. And then the same thing, heavy equipment in B one, B two, B three, industrial government, business, government recreation, and plant development is any commercial vehicle or machinery with a gross vehicle rate over twenty-six thousand one pounds or over forty feet in length. And then the other thing that we needed to add was mobile storage containers, any intermodal shipping container built to ISO standard six six eight under the following subsections. One double A forty-foot standard, one triple A forty-foot high Q, one CC twenty-foot standard, or one CCC twenty-foot. one CC twenty-foot standard, or one CCC twenty-foot high Q. So those are the definitions, and then I've also put the land use table to add. That's the storage containers that are permitted in B1, B2, B3, industrial, um, government, business, and government recreation. And then the heavy equipment. And then, and on this, it has heavy equipment or equipment heavy, but then you'd have to look, go to the definitions to see what it, what, if it's R1, R2, or R3, it's a different definition than the other ones, so that allows heavy equipment in all those areas, or vehicles, um, because that's in the definition. So in the R1, R2, or 3, B1, B2, B3, industrial, government, business, government recreation, and
So that's going to allow people with food trucks and motorhomes and things like that to park them in the driveway. You just want to permit that.
Right.
Okay.
Did it also include, um, urgency vehicles and school buses?
Any questions?
Just that, I, I just want to be clear on it because I, I think the, the goal was to limit somewhat in residential areas what heavy equipment could be parked, so I, I'm looking at what's on the screen now. It's, heavy equipment is permitted in R1, R2, or 3, and then your business owns industrial.
In the R1, R2, and R3, it's over, it's
Has to be under fourteen hundred and one. It can't be over twenty-eight foot in length.
Okay, I see, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. So that allows somebody with a service truck to come home from work and, you know, his company service truck
Like yours.
To park it in, in the driveway.
I think that should say under fourteen thousand.
Yeah, it should say.
Yeah, both of those should say that.
It should say under, and it should say under that.
Yes.
And then that's the only reason why I asked, does that include motorhomes, emergency vehicles, and school buses?
Well, that's what was, the fourteen thousand one was allowing for the food trucks. And the motorhome, or the, um, RVs and that, those are allowed in another part of the code. And then the school buses, I don't know, I don't know how much.
See, that's what me and Bill was wanting, was for the emergency vehicles and school buses, because a lot of people that sit down and drive a bus, they're parked right out here on Euler Avenue. And that is where they have to start from in order to have to go all the way to where they have to get the bus and then come by the way back.
They're over twenty-eight feet as well, right?
Mm-hmm.
So they, they won't be able to be, well, there was a discussion in the meeting about that, about not, the people probably don't want those beside them.
So what started it? What, and did, did we have a complaint or wasn't?
Campaigns actually created the issue, but.
We could put, um, for it to be permitted, I mean, we could get a use permit.
That's, that's conditional use permit was what I thought, I thought that was the direction we were going in for school buses, food trucks, because sometimes, you know, it's appropriate, sometimes it's not.
Well, the food trucks were, we didn't, we talked about food trucks, and that's where we did the fourteen thousand one pounds so that they could be allowed. And
Okay, so that's
But the school buses were not assessed.
Okay.
But do they have to park them at their house?
Well, I, I think the, the reasoning that I got behind that, and I've talked to a few others that has food trailers and stuff like that. You don't want to sit down and have your food truck parked somewhere over in some lot, and the next thing you know. School buses, I mean, uh, if, you know, I, I don't have no problem with it being a conditional use. I don't have no problem at all with that. If they want to come and get one, and it's okay by the zoning, I have no problem with that. As far as the emergency vehicles, that needs to be put on there. It's a lot of people takes ambulances home and wreckers home.
But are, can they weigh?
That's some, well, I mean, don't get me wrong, but you wouldn't want, you know, you wouldn't want a tractor trailer wrecker sitting there. I mean, most of them sit up here, but you do have some that's going to be over fourteen-one that is a rollback. They're a little bit more than fourteen-one. They're actually, if you go by TVWR, they're over twenty-six-one. Got to have a CDL, a B-class in order to drive one. That's the only thing I was thinking about is ambulances and fallbacks. School buses was brought up too, but I'm all right with the conditional use for a school bus, but that's an emergency service. I mean, if you're sitting out here and you've got to have a wrecker, and that got to take fifteen minutes out of their time to go somewhere to get it, that would be like sitting down and, you know, that's, that's an extra fifteen minutes it could be costing somebody their life. That's the way I look at that.
Not, no, I wouldn't think a wrecker would, but
Sometimes they got to have them there to roll them over.
But some people, I mean, if you have a wrecker right beside you, I don't know.
It just seems like we're making storage units out of everybody's driveways.
Uh, maybe we could, uh
I don't think school buses are addressed at all.
That's what I'm saying. They're not addressed, what I'm seeing, even as
They're not.
Use permit.
I, I know one time we was in this, you had brought up school buses, and that's where I keep with the school bus. You brought it up, so I was just making sure that was still addressed.
Uh, and then, you know, especially like if it's rural residential, somebody lives on five acres or more. You know, versus somebody that's in a densely populated area with the school bus. But we, would you all want to ask, uh, the planning commission to, uh, discuss school buses as a conditional use permit?
Uh, I, I have
Certain times.
I mean
Ambulances and wreckers.
And, and I, I'm sorry.
Ambulances and wrecker, or other emergency equipment wreckers and
Yeah.
Well.
They, um, they have a meeting Monday night, so that can be they have to have a class.
And I guess if you if you're going to address that, um, as far as school buses, some are not twenty-eight feet long, I believe.
Uh, they're not.
So under, uh, the equipment, maybe, maybe we should table this so that we could say except school buses as defined in another part of the code. School buses and, and emergency vehicles.
Want to make that motion?
I, I move to, to, to table this until further discussion.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to consider the planning commission's recommendation on heavy equipment. These table, all those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? I have a motion carried. Moving to number four, unfinished business, property purchase update. This will be anticipated executive session.
Would you like to do this to the end of the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll move into new business. We will have a report from the New River Gorge CVB, Becky Sullivan.
This, um, report that I'm about to give was emailed out in May, but I'll pass around. I'll pass these around. Excuse me. And it, it's the annual report from 2024 from the CVB. We are required by state code to do an annual report, financial statement, and a balance and income statement to the state um, by March thirty-first of every year. So, um, I've done that. It's on the state's website. Anybody can view it at any time. This is our report that we send out to all of our board members and all the tax partners. Excuse me. So I'm from the CVB office, which is the visitor center located beside Holiday Lodge on Euler Avenue. Tim's come to visit me, and Diane, I know you know where I'm at. I know most of you in here, you guys don't know where I'm at, but feel free to visit anytime. We're combined with the Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, the New River Gorge Visitor Center is another, we're doing business as the New River Gorge Visitor Center. We share an office, um, volunteers and staff with both organizations. And the CVB's purpose is to promote tourism, um, as a visitor-friendly destination for Fayette County. We collect hotel occupancy tax from the county, from the city of Oak Hill, and from the county of Anstead. And in state code, it says that the occupancy taxes collected by the municipality or the county, and it is split in half. And fifty percent of it stays with you all, and fifty percent of it goes to your local CVB to further those dollars. We want to bring more visitors here. We want to put heads in beds and give them more things to do. The annual report highlights, um, visitor center had about a twelve percent increase year over year. We had visitors from forty-six states and three countries, nine countries, sorry, nine countries. I don't have my glasses on. I will switch. Our top states for visitation are West Virginia, Ohio, Pennsylvania, North Carolina, Virginia, and Florida. Our top countries are Canada, France, Germany, Switzerland, and Netherlands. The top three interests include, um, our events and Bridge Day, our state and national park, the New River Gorge Bridge, and the national park. Uh, the CVB spent about seventy-four percent of their budget on marketing, uh, for the New River Gorge region. We are required by state code to spend forty percent of our budget. Um, last year in 2024, we spent seventy-four, uh, percent of our budget on our marketing dollars. This does include promotional efforts, social media, website, brochures, postage, partnerships, and special event marketing. One thousand six hundred and fifty-five jobs are supported by tourism in Fayette County. A hundred and seventy point six million travel-generated spending is done in Fayette County. Visitor guide request increased by twenty-six percent, and those are visitor guide requests that we, we receive in our office. Whether that's from the West Virginia Department of Tourism, or the advertising that we do where people collect and say they want a visitor's guide to plan their vacation here. Our partner clicks increased by a hundred and fifty-eight percent. We are now starting to see our lodging partners, um, tell us that we are in their top five referrals for websites. So people come to the New River Gorge CVB's website, they click on a lodging property, they go to that person's website, and they can see where they're getting that, um, traffic from. The website's lodging page also increased by ten percent, and the guide request page is up by a hundred and forty-three percent. The direct advertising that you'll see for Oak Hill from us does include, um, we split advertising with the chamber for the Oak Hill Police Calendar. We do that. Um, we do Oak Leaf advertising, and we do rat card promotion. Um, we do promotion for the White Oak Rail Trail Expo, advertising on Facebook, and coordinating with our local news. We have required photos that are specific to Needles Eye for bouldering and hiking. Um, next Tuesday, we have a photo shoot planned with the West Virginia Department of Tourism, Digital Relativity, and the CVB to do a specific biking and hiking photo shoot at Needles Eye, so we'll have all the activities covered. To use in our advertising with the CVB. Now, we also have a partnership with Visit Southern West Virginia. This is where it gets confusing. Um, there is New River Gorge CVB, which is your county CVB. There is Visit Fayetteville, which is the Fayetteville specific, so they just do the town of Fayetteville, which is why I don't say I get tax money from the town of Fayetteville. And then there's Visit Southern West Virginia. So this is Visit Southern West Virginia. And, um, this partnership is extremely valuable, and the city of Oak Hill does contribute a portion of the hotel motel tax for us to partner with this organization. This is their current visitor's guide, and I flag, um, all of the Oak Hill mentions in your ad in here. If you guys want to take a look, pass that around. Um, I talked with Lisa Strater at Visit Southern West Virginia, and Oak Hill is currently included in there. It's not an app, it's a digital download where it's called New River Gorge, Beckley, and Beyond Pass. And in one month, Needles Eye had forty-six check-ins, and the amphitheater had sixty-nine. And those are digital check-ins. It's like the waterfall trail that you've seen tourism do. Um, so this is the New River Gorge, Beckley, and Beyond Pass that's online. We also do photos and B-roll sharing with, uh, this organization, Visit Southern West Virginia. Oak Hill has complimentary advertising in the visitor's guide and, um, content in the Fayette County section, which you'll see. And they have new photos and B-roll being utilized in co-op advertising campaigns through the West Virginia Tourism Co-op, um, which is an awesome program. We utilize it year after year, and it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split. So tourism office pays seventy-five percent of the ad, and we pay twenty-five percent, and that's if you do multi-partners. So Visit Southern West Virginia, New River Gorge, and Visit Fayetteville all combined, because we're promoting the same thing, trying to get people to come to this area and sleep in our vacation rentals, our hotels, our campgrounds, and plan the activities and stay longer. So that is all I have, and I know you all got the email. A lot of this may be repetitive, but I'm open to taking questions or anything you want to add at this point.
Becky, what are your hours out there?
Monday through Friday, nine to five, and Saturday, nine to three.
Nine to three?
Mm-hmm.
Do you get no federal money at all, like park service or anything there?
No.
People are promoting their park?
No. No.
Has, I mean, have you asked and been denied, or why don't they?
No, no, I don't, I, I don't know if the park is getting much money. Um, I mean, you know, it's been five years. Um, they've done some improvement projects and stuff with the money they have received as far as visiting parking and boardwalks and things, but as far as CVB is getting federal money, no, it's all written, it's all state written in state code for the municipalities and the counties.
Just the increase in the visitors and
And there may be some grant opportunities and stuff that we haven't explored yet. We could look into those.
Any other questions for Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Becky, for
Thank you so much. Those Where Are You pieces are very helpful, because I don't recognize half of those places you're at. It's, it's crazy.
Right here in your backyard.
I've been here all my life for two months in Florida, which we want to be down there this time of year. Thank you so much. May we have a motion to accept Ms. Sullivan's report?
I'll make a motion that we accept Becky's report.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to accept the annual report from the CVB. All those in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Up next, we have some little bit of good news. Um, police promotion Sergeant Jack Brown will be promoted to lieutenant.
Thank you, Ma'am. Uh, I believe everybody has in front of them the, uh, letter from the Civil Service Commission, uh, requesting that uh requesting that Sergeant Jack Brown be promoted to the rank of lieutenant. He will make our third lieutenant. Jack's been with us since two thousand eleven. Well, I'm close with all of them. And of course, everybody knows that Jack is stationed primarily at the schools at Allmire Avenue. And does a tremendous job for us there. Helping with kids, teachers, awful helps the city and police department by being out there stationed out there. So if Jack or make that motion if you would. Have Jack come up and get his lieutenant's badge.
I had so moved that we accept the promotion from Sergeant Jack Brown to Lieutenant Jack Brown.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to promote Sergeant Jack Brown lieutenant. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried.
I'm just standing here because I'm up next also, I believe. I agree with that one. I'll go to the next.
Item number seven is a request to use the ultimate funds to purchase new police cruisers the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six.
I thought we kind of handled this six or eight months ago, but I believe it may have got, some of the wording may have got mixed up and I'm afraid it did. So I just wanted to make clear that, you know, uh I think I said during the budget meeting workshops uh back in February that uh we were going to use, you all had voted to use opioid money to purchase cruisers for uh fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh and and I spoke about that we needed to purchase two more cruisers in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And maybe I'm just not clear on it. Uh but I would request that we use those opioid funds to make those purchases of two more cruisers coming up in this fiscal year that we're in now. Which is in that fund right now.
It's over a hundred thousand, but I'm not sure exactly.
How much are the cruisers now?
Uh I believe the ones that we just purchased was a hundred and three thousand total, and that was equipment and all uh for two, so about fifty thousand apiece. We got over a hundred. Yeah, there's, I'm pretty sure there's well over a hundred.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the uh use the opioid insurance to achieve purchase to new vehicles.
And we have a second.
I'll say.
We have a motion to accept the chief's request to purchase police cruisers for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. All of those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number eight, fiscal year twenty-six, call severance fund budget revision.
Go ahead and do those call severance reports. So this is to change our fund balance from what we originally budgeted for in call severance. We budgeted one thousand five hundred dollars to be our fund balance. It is only six hundred and eighty dollars, so we need to decrease um the fund balance and our expenditures by eight hundred twenty dollars. So and the other the
Yeah, the doctor.
It was it, yes. So uh this revision shows the previously approved amount is fifteen hundred. We're going to decrease it by eight hundred twenty dollars and make it six eighty. In turn, we will have to decrease what we uh boasted to spend in in public works, which was thirty-six five hundred. So we're decreasing that eight hundred twenty and which will make that new amount thirty-five thousand six hundred and eight.
Any questions?
Mayor, I motion that we accept the coal severance fund budget revision.
And we got a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to accept the coal fund budget revision. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. We are moving to number nine. It was not on your sheet, but this is a what we're sticking in.
Um this ended is an emergency situation that has come to us. Um we need a new roof on City Hall and upstairs is it's leaking and are you all having any back here now? So it was only here, but now it's upstairs too in the in the coal heritage area. And so we wanted to go ahead and advertise for the bids so that we can get them back while they can still do the roofing and not get into coal weather. So we also, we're going to ask sanitary board to pay half of the roof because they're housed here. We have buildings here. Um and we do their accounting and so they're settled. So
So we need a motion for permission to have that.
Is that, is that something that we can do, being that it's not only actually?
But we just became aware of the one upstairs.
And so you're just looking for or to put it out for bid tonight? Okay, well, I'll make that motion. You want to bid?
May we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to advertise for the city bids.
Mayor, I'll motion that because of an emergency situation with the roof leaking and then that we uh go to bid for
May we have a second?
I second it.
Okay. We have motion and a second for an emergency situation or permission to advertise for the roof, City Hall. All those in favor? All opposed? Fair enough. Thank you very much. Motion is carried. We're going to have one more. Uh it's not really an emergency situation.
But since Robert's here and came prepared to talk about our branding, I thought it would be good if he gave an update on that. About what we've been doing with the uh the Destination By Design.
This is departmental.
Well, I get, yeah, I guess we can say it's a part. Sorry.
Good to go.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we've been part of the the Hubcap Communities Program for three years now. I've been on the team for the last eighteen months because that's when I moved back. Uh but it's been a really exciting time. And what we did is we undertook a branding and wayfinding initiative uh with a company called Destination By Design. And they did phenomenal work um for for Oak Hill, also for Smithers and Montgomery. Uh and then uh a regional initiative for the New River Gorge. Uh and that'll be coming out more soon. Uh but if you want a preliminary look, I'm just going to pass you guys around my phone real quick. There's five photos here. And what you can see is the primary brand mark. It's the first one. A couple examples of how it uh can be used in different ways. Um our tagline, where adventure puts down roots. So the the branding uh campaign is Explore Oak Hill. Uh and the tagline for it is where adventure puts down roots. Um and then an example of the wayfinding sign that they developed for us um and what those would look like when we put them around town. And we'll come back and do a a formal presentation on this where we can put this up on the big screen, although they might be trying to pull it up right now, and that would, that would be easy. Um but they did a really phenomenal job and every part of the the logo they put together has meaning to the town and the area. Um and the way the sign is designed, you'll see in a second, just looks really, really sharp and has connection to our area and the region. Um and we think it's going to be a great addition to uh to our area and then the other towns that are also participating in this and tying us all together as uh the New River Gorge towns, N R G towns. So um it's been a real pleasure to be a part of the initiative and to see uh what's come back. And we're pretty excited for the next stages, which is implementation and uh we're going to be looking for ways to find funding to get the signs, you know, made and and put in. The plan that they gave us for the wayfinding for the signs is actually D O H approved. So they they've communicated with West Virginia Department of Highway, Department of Transportation. Um and already gone through all the preliminary things that to make sure our sign placement around town is everywhere it needs to be. They've identified all the sites that we meet, all the code requirements. Here's some examples on the big screen.
And this does not change the govern, the city government's logo. This is for people to use in their advertising. Um you know, they can put it on something. It's for us to use. Matter of fact, Josh Sappio is working on videos for the parks and it will be some of these designs will be in that.
Did you guys get to see the sign over there?
I texted a couple people. Is that okay?
Yeah, for sure. I'll keep them up late.
And here's just some ideas if we use it on some of our things, like if the C V B do something, you know, they could.
Yeah, the idea is it's it's an attraction brand. Um so for attracting, you know, tourism, uh tourists in that are already visiting the park, but also for attracting new businesses, people to move here, um to be used in all those ways. So it's a complement to the city brand, which will stay intact. It is, this is a marketing and attraction brand. We had a good team.
That coming.
Me to Allison, uh Megan, James. We've got a great team.
Yeah, they, I'm not going to take any credit because I have no creativity. So I couldn't even answer half the questions they ask. But um Robert and Megan and Allison did a great job on that.
So yeah, we'll come back and do a full presentation in in the not-too-distant future, and we'll talk about some funding opportunities and what it's going to take to get the signage up and it'd be really neat.
Yeah, yeah, the wayfinding signs will be really good, especially to find Needles Eye.
Thank you, guys.
That kind of, this may be just a little off, but when I seen that logo, it just brought me back to the city logo at first I do.
Still in the, have checked lately to see what stage it's in, but it's still in that process.
To get the copyright.
To get copyright, yeah.
All right. Would you guys like to go ahead and continue all the way down to the bottom and then do our executive session? Just finish out? Okay. Do we have any department reports? You've all read the ones that we do have. Then we have a motion to accept all of the department reports.
Make a motion that we accept the department reports.
We have a second.
No seconds now.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept all department reports. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Any council comments?
Mayor, I got one thing that it was just, and I didn't know if it was worth putting on the agenda or asking, maybe I was just asking about, a couple people's reached out to me about the possibility of a stop sign on Third Avenue and Third Second. Is that, do you like cut up May Hand, you go around and Third comes up? Couple people out there, you know, that I think you all may have been working out in that area today. Couple people mentioned about maybe like coming up the hill, a stop sign there. There's nothing that, I'm sure that's something that you can just run out there and stick up, right? If that's okay. I told him I would ask.
Before the next meeting of council, I believe the grand opening for the uh trail project at Needles Eye is uh going to have a uh the grand opening is that?
Any other council comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir?
Well, I've had some people come in to ask about the Minden Bridge. Is that the city's responsibility or the state's responsibility?
That was the state's.
State of West Virginia.
Yes, and when we were with them, they pretty much told us they weren't.
It's a three hundred thousand dollar project.
Okay, those in the listening area, that's a three hundred thousand dollar project that State of West Virginia at this time is not willing to do.
And someone said that they had even, uh it had worked out better for them not to have it.
To just mention that they are having this state tournaments down here at our local city baseball parks and it's been well attended.
There's also a food truck, I noticed, down there from the Board of Education. That's really nice.
Hey, it's a food truck for the Board of Education. That was for kids.
Right.
Yeah, it's for, it's for kids.
That's very nice, nice gesture from here for.
Our summer youth, or the summer garage crew has gotten to eat there.
Uh I just had one question now. What is the status of the vacant building register?
Well, we are still working on that. We're, we want to make a proposal of how the ordinance needs changed in order to make it work for what you all want it for. And we haven't done, haven't done.
And uh I was going to ask, uh where are we with the boards on the windows? The ordinance that we passed and that, because now, I mean, the citizens are speaking up now because they're sticking stickers in them.
I sent um I sent a letter to the owners of the former Besties Building. And he replied and said that they um they may not put glass back there, but they were going to do something with it. And so I sent him an email the other day and told him that his time was up. Um and did he have an idea of a timeline? And I haven't heard back from him. So the next thing I'll do is send him a letter that tells him about the fine. Well, I've already told him about the fines. So I have to, I guess we have to charge him and institute fines. Um I talked with the owner of the building on Central and they are working on getting that replaced. Um the guys from Sting Miller have been in and out and they're starting, they're going to, or the old Sting Miller building. They're going to start working at that location. They've been here. So I don't know. They have to still get in touch with Fire Marshal. They're um they're going to put a convenience store in there. There's some things they have to do before they can get that.
Well, I did notice, I thought that they had replaced their glass. Thought it was I thought was, I may have looked the wrong one. I, I, you know.
And so I did, we talked, I talked to Chris about that today. So we're going to work on that and some dilapidated properties.
If I may, if I may ask, Mr. File, we're the chief of police. When those signs are placed on those buildings, it's not proper for one of city employees to go up and just remove those, right? That's private property, correct? Can we just go take those signs off? Who's to say the owner didn't put them up there and then just wait for somebody from the city to come up? The next thing you know, we're trespassing and removing something that they possibly put up. Not saying the owners of the building did that, but would that be proper for us to go up there and do that? Because there's a lot of complaints about how long this stuff was there. And there was really, you know, in my personal opinion, I don't think And there was really, you know, in my personal opinion, I don't think we should go on private property and start, that's just like. Reverse vandalism basically, but still, you know. Wait, what's, what's your rules? Legally, you know, what can we do?
I think you need to look at each one individually. There is a risk if you're going on private property and removing something.
I just want folks to know that, that we just, you know, we, we know they're there. We just can't go around and just pull them off.
Like, there's probably a risk for whoever put those up there if they were caught doing that on private property.
Absolutely.
Right.
Future agenda items, folks, uh, August eleventh, we will give our new city manager his oath of office. And we will be opening steel bids for paving and possibly approving a letter to send the award to the company.
Part additional one, um, the fire department has been given an M O U from the county commission, uh, regarding the purchase of a new fire truck. Um, and, and. She came and, and wanted to make sure that that was on the agenda for August.
Chief, anything you need to say about that?
About this topic.
Good. All right, sir. All right, our announcements are as follows, a special council meeting on the twenty ninth at six. For the twenty twenty five final budget revision. We'll also be doing evaluation of Gretchen Brown. And we have our regular council meeting, August eleventh, twenty twenty five. All right, may we have a motion to move into our executive session?
Mayor, I would, I would move that we move into executive session to discuss the, uh. Property purchase update, possible nego, property negotiation. And also a, uh, personnel matter under department reports.
Okay. Then we have a second.
Second.
Your motion and a second, uh, exactly what Mr. Hambest just said, I can't remember all of that. All those in favor? All opposed? We are now in executive session. Thank you all for coming up. You're more than welcome to stay if you like. We may be a little bit, so hopefully you have some sense.
All right, folks, may we have a motion to resume our regular session?
I make a motion that we resume our regular council session.
Our second.
We have a motion in a second to resume our regular council session. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? We are now out of the executive session and returning to our regular agenda for this evening. We have a motion in a second to resume our regular council session. All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? We are now out of the executive session and returning to our regular agenda for this evening. So, that's pretty much everything, folks. You all are ready to adjourn. Do we have any other comments? Discussion on anything? All set? Well, let's, let's do this a little different tonight. Let's give a motion to adjourn.